I'd like to call to order the January 28, 2019, meeting of the Highland Park Board of Education. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, setting forth the time, date, and location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger and posted on the board's website at least 48 hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. Lynda, could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Here.
Ms. Simorusti?
Here.
Ms. Coleman?
Here.
Ms. Gowen?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Magaziner?
Here.
Ms. McFadden, D'Nikola?
Here.
Mr. Roslevich?
Here.
Be it resolved pursuant to the Sunshine Act and JSA 10-4-12 and 13, the Highland Park Board of Education will now meet in closed session to discuss HIV and student discipline matters. These exemptions are permitted to be discussed in closed session in accordance with NJSA 10-4-13. Information regarding the board's closed session discussion will be disclosed to the public as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Actually, I'm going to add one more thing on there because we were going to have a quick conversation about the board candidates for the open position. So I will add that to our list of things that we will discuss in closed. Can I get a motion to recess to closed session?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to reconvene to public session?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Flag is over here to my left.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Lynda, do we have any communications on the agenda other than what's on the agenda?
No, just what's on the agenda.
Okay. Oh, yeah, our students aren't here. That's odd.
Oh, you think they didn't realize? You think they went to the high school?
I don't know why they would have gone anywhere else. No one told them to go anywhere else.
Is it midterms?
It's midterms, yeah.
That could be why. Scott, do you want to just give us a quick update on the situation that the communications are about?
Sure.
Just where we are with that process?
So the middle school faculty and Mrs. Osemier decided to change the way kids sign in and out of class to go to the bathroom for a couple of reasons. One being that they noticed some kids were frequent flyers, frequently leaving classes over the course of the day to go to the bathroom, go here, nurse, wherever. They felt, the faculty felt, it would be helpful for students to self-monitor themselves and how they structured their day. The other reason was because we were seeing an increase in behavioral incidences occurring at the bathrooms, and it was, the system we had in place was not effective. Being able to identify when students are in the bathroom will help Mrs. Osemier if she has to take any disciplinary action to be able to do her investigation more effectively. We have no security cameras in the halls that watch kids. We don't have hall monitors, so the only means we have to just track kids' whereabouts for their own safety in some cases is through this process. I know there have been some concerns about, one, the sanitary, lack of sanitary nature of using the agendas. Mrs. Osemier and I had a talk about that today. She pointed out that the passes that we've been using are actually less sanitary than having the kids use their own agendas. We have laminate passes into each classroom, and the kids would take the pass, sign out of a book, and bring it to the bathroom. Passes being shared by all the kids in the class. We don't wash those passes. The agendas are only used by students who own them. We've had this system in place at the high school now for many years, more years than I've been here. So it hadn't had any issues or concerns, so this is the first time we're fielding these concerns at the middle school. The other concern that came up in the communication had to do with the disenfranchisement of students and the stripping of ownership of their own time and their own responsibility. And the other concern was the nature that we were, the idea that we were tracking kids, that we were following kids wherever they were going, almost seemed like a big brotherly. So what I've done is I've tasked Mrs. Osemier to speak with the teachers, some of whom are here in the audience, to discuss those concerns, those specific concerns. They haven't had an opportunity to do that. Mrs. Osemier did collect feedback from all of her faculty, and I have that information here, which I can pass out at some point later. But it does appear that it's a consensus among the faculty that this is a system that's already working and that they'd like to see continue. But we recognize that some changes may have to be made, and as a faculty, they'll look to potentially make those changes. I think your next faculty meeting is in about two weeks, and that's when Mrs. Osemier is going to bring up the concerns that came to me by email. Did I miss anything that you can think of if you'd like to ask me?
There were specific concerns about bathroom usage being a private, I don't know how much I want to discuss it, particularly for middle school girls who are going through physical changes associated with puberty and perhaps don't want to get up and tell the teacher in front of the whole class, "I need you to sign this, please, because I'm going to the bathroom." That was a concern that was expressed with some specificity.
So I spoke to two teachers who are highly respected, have a real good pulse on the students and what they're about. And what they assured me was that they're finding ways to work with kids discreetly. You know, when students get up to sign out and grab a pass and sign out with a timesheet, it's pretty obvious, you know, child's getting up, getting up to the podium or wherever the sign-out sheet is, as opposed to when needing to go to the bathroom using the agenda. I don't know how they're doing this discreetly, but I was assured that they're making efforts to do that.
I'm not sure how that's possible. I mean, again, we don't have to discuss this now, but you have to go and get the teacher's signature. It's different than stepping out. I mean, so it is a concern for people. I mean, we've had, should we wait till later?
No, no, I mean, I brought it up now because it's the only place it's on our agenda. But I guess one of the things that it would be helpful to have in those conversations with teachers moving forward is not only, like, do you think this policy is okay, but would you have suggestions for altering this policy that may be less intrusive for students?
Perhaps some of the teachers who are here, if they speak tonight during public event, could shed light on that, you know, if they've already considered some of the actions.
They may not want to do that as individuals, but, you know, when they're having the private faculty meeting.
I agree. I think it should be done collaboratively.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I agree.
But that would be an opportunity to not just say, you know, "Do you think this policy is okay?", but, you know, "Are there any changes to this policy?"
Well, and I do want to make it clear, so I agree with you that that would be a good idea, but I also want to make it clear that I haven't tasked Mrs. Osemier to simply ask everybody if the policy's okay, although that's what she did and then collected data about it in these sheets. I would like her to specifically address four concerns that came to my attention via email from two parents in particular, very specific concerns. I don't think those have been brought to you by Mrs. Osemier.
Well, and then there was one email that came to me, but I don't believe to the rest of the board, which was that there was a student petition, which we still haven't unearthed.
Yeah, Mrs. Osemier was not able to give that to me. She didn't have possession of it, so I'm not sure about the student petition. I've heard about it.
One of the students was scheduled to come tonight. I'm not sure if he's still coming. I know this because my, I'm sorry, middle school, yeah. My child was scheduled to be a moral support backup, so.
I do need to echo, if you could just take my pass around, I need to echo a concern that Mrs. Osemier had. Again, this practice has been in place at the high school for many years. We have several students, parents who, we had several parents who had students in both the middle and high school during the time in which this practice was in place at the high school, but it has never been brought to Mr. Lassiter's attention that there was a concern. Mrs. Osemier doesn't understand why there's such a concern at the middle school at this point.
We could explain that. I mean, you know, there are concerns because middle school students are going through physical changes that are different. That one concern is with girls who are starting to develop, having their periods, maybe need to leave. I mean, thinking back on my own experience of being 13 and having to run out, you know, with a big stain on my pants, you know, it's terrible. It's weird to speak about here at a public board meeting, but it's a concern. You know, it's embarrassing. I would, I mean, if there's still time to forward additional concerns to Mrs. Osemier, one that I have is for students who have been taught, perhaps by their parents and child study team, to step out of their room if they feel like they're about to get very upset. There are some students with special needs, possibly no longer classified, who, you know, might need to step out, and parents may have done a lot of training around the student doing that discreetly, not having to, in the middle of that emotional upset, step to the front of the room. If it's a lecture-type lesson, it's different if it centers, but if it's a lecture-type lesson, it's like, "I need to leave."
Well, look, tonight I will listen to everyone's concerns.
Okay, thank you.
And as I suggested, no decisions are going to be made to overturn this protocol. However, I expect that the faculty will work with Mrs. Osemier to try to resolve some of the concerns that have been brought to our attention.
Wonderful. Thank you, Scott.
Okay, so number eight, we have, and just as a reminder to everyone who's here and to board members, this is one of our few meetings of the year where we're going over some of the agenda items for the first time, and we're voting on them. We don't have a workshop session and a voting session because our first meeting of the year was our reorganization meeting, so there wasn't anything on that agenda to be voted on. So everything that needs to be voted on this month will be both going over this evening and voting on. So number eight is the correction to the minutes under personnel. There was a slight, slight change for the, sorry, Lynda, what, which, oh, I'm sorry, to the minutes of the December 17, 2018 agenda, or to the minutes, I'm sorry, right? To the minutes of the December 18 meeting?
The correction to the minutes which are going to be approved.
Approved tonight.
Right.
Okay. And then agenda item number nine is the approval of the minutes from the public workshop and executive sessions from December 10, the regular public and executive session meetings from December 17, and the regular public reorganization meeting from January 7, 2019. Can I get a motion to move items eight and nine?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? No? Lynda, could we get a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowen?
Abstain as to January 7. Yes, as to the others.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, D'Nikola?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Okay, we don't have students for our student representative report, so I guess that.
That sets me up. I would like to, now that we're at the mid-year point of the school year, to give the community and the Board of Education an update about progress we're making towards achieving the three goals inherent in our pathway to excellence, our strategic plan. Just a reminder that the first goal has us looking at all the ways we can help to emphasize the needs of the whole child. So that means more than just promoting academic excellence. Has to do with making sure kids are socially, emotionally, and mentally healthy individuals. The second goal has us focusing on educational equity, and the language of this goal has changed over the year or two to include such phrases as genders, gender identities, and socioeconomic backgrounds. We want to make sure that when we talk about inclusion, we're being all-inclusive. And the third goal puts more of a focus on academic performance as we look to improve the way we individualize instruction for all of our students. So tonight, I want to give you a progress report, an update on those actions that we've been able to fully implement, those that we're in process of implementing, and those that have been non-starters so far to help us get to these three goals. There are 17 total actions in this year's version of the strategic plan, which was first developed three years ago, in 2016, by about 60 members of our community, including some folks who don't even have kids here in our schools, residents who came to participate in the process. Three of these action steps are fully implemented. I'm going to touch on those in a second. Twelve are still in progress, and two have not yet started. We anticipate we'll be able to get rolling on those two action steps, but at this point in the year, we haven't gotten there. So the first action step that we've fully implemented is your two of restorative practices. So those students who are in the back from the high school and some of our middle school teachers can attest to some of the changes, I think, that we're seeing in the way we are responding to student behavioral challenges, the way we're trying to build community. I want to show you an example of how we have actually tried to be proactive in building community, which is part and parcel of restorative practices. Ms. Luxa, who is our Dean of Restorative Practices and visited the board a couple of months ago, has actually begun now to co-write lesson plans with some of the high school teachers, I can't speak to the middle school, but the high school teachers, to incorporate what we refer to as community-building circle talks in her classes, and I'm sorry, in their classes, that relate to their curriculum. And here's an example of one that Ms. Luxa created with Mr. Gold, one of our high school teachers, that has the kids focusing on the differences they all bring to their class, the need to recognize differences, but at the same time, understand that differences also make up a whole community. I'm going to pass out a sample, the sample lesson plans, multi-pages, you can look at it later. The vision in year three is that we actually incorporate 20- to 30-minute community-building circle talks, you can take one and pass it around, in as many middle and high school classes as we can on a weekly or semi-weekly basis, getting kids to talk to each other, to build community in their classes, and then expand a positive mass that that sense of community builds into the entire school. Even though we're in year two of a three-year implementation plan, and by the way, we're going to be seeking some support from the organization that we contracted with a few years ago to help us reflect on the plan and the status of the plan and what we might need to change, that group is called the International Institute for Restorative Practices. Even though we're in year two, the reality is, and I'm about to show you, I'm going to zoom in on a graphic, the reality is, we're more like in year one. So when Ms. Luxa sits down with a consultant from IIRP to review the three-year plan, the likelihood is we're going to have to project it out for an additional, at least one additional year. And I'll give you an example of why, an illustration of why I think we're really not in year two, we're more so in year one. I have a tremendous document I got hold of from the Oakland City School District. Oakland is, according to Dr. Ann Gregory, one of the pioneers right now, along with Denver Schools, in the area of mass inclusion of restorative practices in a school system. And in this document, Oakland points to four different levels of restorative practice inclusion in a school culture, the first being one in which, when we respond to discipline incidences, we're only incorporating the accountability piece, student suspended, student received lunch detention, or some other sort of disciplinary measure. There's no restorative justice, there's no reactive circle to help the student understand how he or she may have done harm to the community. As you can see, there are increments that lead towards what would be the ideal restorative practice-laden school culture that would have students, when they act out, particularly when they act out, be provided support to the extent by which, you know, 80% of the time spent with the student or the number of resources that are provided are all aligned with restorative practices, while only 20% of that whole is associated with some kind of punitive disciplinary measure. I believe we're here right now. 20% of what we do for a student is restorative, 80% is punitive, or more focused on accountability measures. And so that's why I think we're not here, which would conceivably be year two, if this is year zero, baseline year, year one, two, and three. So we'll see how that plays out. So I think we still have progress to be made, plenty of progress to be made. Dr. Gregory, who's worked with school districts like Syracuse and Denver, claims it takes up to seven years. Now, those are big city school districts, so perhaps we can do it in a little less time, but I think Sloan said he's going to win the race. The second action step of the three that we have effectively implemented is to bring back sources of strength, and this is something of which I'm really, really proud. We have 15 students, grades nine to 12, working with Ms. Holman, who is one of our teen center faculty, to foster a more positive school culture. And at the same time, besides being your peer positive culture leaders, also be literally sources of strength for peers who might need support. These students are trained twice a year, once over the course of three days and two nights in August at a retreat held at a local hotel, obviously strictly supervised by faculty, and another period, which is coming up in March, which they'll be trained for a full day. And it's during these training sessions that they not only learn how to promote positive culture, but just as importantly, what resources they can tap into if they have peers reaching out to them in their peer groups crying out for help. The Sources of Strength program came out of a need to address very high rates of suicide ideation, but I think it's expanded now to be more about not just the kids who might have suicidal thoughts or tendencies, but also to, in general, promote this positive culture. So these are just some of the things that they've done. I noticed one day when walking through the high school glass halls, and students might have noticed it too, one day, these post-its showing up, like randomly, of positive messages in various places. I actually noticed them on the window, in the windows in the glass halls, and then a little further down on the second floor. And I came to find out, when I did a little research, it's the Sources of Strength folks who were doing this dirty work. Matt Hirsch, who's a roving reporter for the daily Highland Park Planet, is doing a story on sources of strength. So, did you want to say something, Darcy?
I just wanted to give a quick shout-out to Amy Seville, who was really the driving force behind bringing this to the district. She approached me about it, however long ago it was that Israel Soto was here, for those of us who are better at timelines than I am. So that's when, like, the idea first crept up, and then she pushed again last year, and, you know, now that we have a little bit more structure and stability going, we were able to really implement it this time and get it off the ground. So I just wanted to publicly thank her for her help and support, because this is her area of expertise. She's also going to help us with our suicide prevention policy. This is something she knows a lot about. She goes around the state training people on this program and also on suicide prevention issues, and I really appreciate her assistance.
We're definitely blessed to have her and others like Dr. Gregory working for us, with us. Hey, by the way, I don't have a slide for this. So Dr. Maurice Elias, who we all know, we should all know, has branded something he calls the jumbled schoolhouse graph, jumbled schoolhouse. This idea that schools like ours, districts like ours, have all of these wonderful supports in place, restorative practices, I didn't even mention the Bartle Social Emotional Decision-Making Lab, Responsive Classroom at Irving, all of these different things, sources of strength, but they're jumbled. There's not as much order as there could be to being sure that they're working together, but there's actually a vertical alignment of all of these things, so kids know when they start pre-K or kindergarten, they have all these supports, like a system of supports. So I'm lucky to have two interns, doctoral interns, working with me from Dr. Maurice's lab, his office, who are going to help us on jumble the schoolhouse. So they're going to take charge of a committee that I just kicked off called the Social Emotional Learning Committee. It's made up of our principals, Ms. Luxa, guidance counselors, Mr. Harrison, some other folks. They're going to work together to try to help us seed the synergy among all of these different things. And the last action step that we implemented successfully, although it's still a work in progress, is to update the code of conduct. The new codes of conduct were rolled out in September. We learned over the last four or five months things that we needed to improve, and so last week, or no, two weeks ago, the discipline study group met, and this is a group made up of teachers, students, members of the board, Mr. Harrison is there, all kinds of folks, stakeholders. And we decided on a couple of things we need to change. Thanks to the unfortunate incidences that occurred with some students, we reflected on this reality that while here we were trying to move towards a restorative practices approach in a way from a wholly punitive discipline mindset, we still had a zero tolerance policy in place. If the student does this, automatic five-day suspension. If the student does this, automatic 10-day suspension. So what we decided after a lot of discussion, and we spent the majority of our last meeting just talking about zero tolerance, is that we would step away from the zero tolerance policy, still maintain accountability, you know, so if the student does this, no longer is it minimum five-day suspension, rather, it is up to five-days suspension. We have four levels of responses that we use when students act out in certain ways. The top levels could call for suspension, but now what we do is employ a more, like a gray shade response instead of a just automatic, this is what it's going to be. The new codes of conduct, if you read them and they're up on the website, if you go to District, to the dropdown menu, and you can pull it up, does, for the first time in a long time in our district, provide more balance between supports and accountability. We actually have written into the levels language, the four levels language, what specific support students are going to receive. Student at Bartle acts out in a certain way, he or she is going to be referred to the Social Emotional Decision-Making Lab. Student in the middle or high school has a fight or an argument or is disrespectful to somebody, boom, you're going to be offered a reactive circle talk with Ms. Luxa. And the last thing I do want to point out, that's something that my student cabinet made a point to share with me, their appreciation for the inclusion of very concrete standards that help guide students' behavior. So in the past, we did have codes of conduct, but they were pretty broad. Now we try to define specific infractions. Look, the reality is, especially starting in fifth grade through the middle school years, kids are, as they're growing up, they're pushing the envelope, they're testing the boundaries, they want to know, I think, what is right and what's wrong sometimes, and I think part of our work is to help teach them what's right and what's wrong, but be supportive at the same time. So those concrete standards will help them do so. Just a couple more things I want to share with you. As I mentioned earlier, we have 12 action steps that are works in progress. I want to point out that this doesn't mean that we haven't done anything in these areas. We are still spending a lot of our professional learning community time focusing on cultural responsiveness, and here are some examples of things that we have been doing. We've been having periodical discussions, book talks at the high school, they were working on race talk in some circles. We are also still focused on detracking our middle school math program. The board and I have been talking about this repeatedly since the fall. I'll just give you a very quick update. Our community advisory committee, again, a stakeholder group, we've got parents on that committee, members of the board, students, teachers. We also have a local expert in math instruction from Rutgers. This group is going to meet again February 6. The aim is for us to launch a change in the way we track our students, starting in sixth grade math in 2020, 2021. Preparations are being made as early as right now because curriculum revision work has to be done, starting in grades four. Lots of discussions with teachers. At Bartle, we have a discussion coming up about whether we should go to a self-contained model whereby teachers in fourth and fifth grade would teach certain subjects in their classes, and the students would then go to the other teacher's classroom to work with that teacher on the subject. That might happen, perhaps, in math. It's going to be incumbent upon the collaborative discussions we have with the teachers. And often, it's going to be top-down directive. It's all going to be something that we can agree upon together. Still to launch, so these are the non-starters, these are the things that we have not yet done, there are two action steps not yet launched, the review and the revamp of our homework protocol. I collected a good deal of qualitative data, I conducted focus groups, interviews, and some quantitative data out of a survey that I administered two years ago. I haven't done anything with that data yet because homework could be the third rail for a superintendent. If I'm not careful and I don't work with the board of the community slowly and gradually through a review of our homework protocol, it could go bad. So knowing that we have a lot of other things on our plate, this is still on hold, but definitely something we want to keep in our strategic plan. And there was one other... Oh, I'm sorry. And then the other item that we haven't put in place yet is to develop a program that would have students lead discussions about cultural diversity. It's part of our effort to attain goal two, promote educational equity. So with that, I'll open up to the board if they have any questions or comments. Otherwise, that's my presentation.
Well, I wanted to ask, in terms of culturally responsive teaching, if the policy, the statewide policy, well, the statewide law known as the Amistad Act has been part of the discussions with teachers? Because I know that it takes a little bit of time to research the law, why that law came about, how that law came about, and subsequent issues that have made it really difficult to implement that. So I thought that that might have been part of the conversation with the teaching staff, to let them know that that's what we're working on, not just at the administrative level, but...
Yeah, that conversation's been had already by Ms. Fittipaldi, and she's scheduling there to be curriculum work done over the summer with our social studies teachers first, to try to be more, to try to codify the efforts.
So Ms. Fittipaldi has spoken to teachers...
Correct.
District-wide or just...
I believe just the middle and high school teachers right now, that she's going to be focusing on K-5.
Okay. Because I know that we had talked about books in the classroom at that level, at the K to five level.
I think she wants to take it one level of school at a time, so she might first focus the summer on Middleton High School and then on K-5 in the summer of 2020.
Okay.
Yeah, there's been a lot of work done behind the scenes, thanks to Ms. McFadden, Dana Colas, she's the chair of our curriculum committee, about that. So thanks for the entree to share that.
Thank you, too.
Get close to your mic, my friend.
Sorry. Thanks to Ms. Fittipaldi for being responsive. Of course, it's the kind of thing that I wish was done yesterday, but I'll be patient.
Anybody else?
Yeah, a quick question or point, really. I'm glad you shared the Oakland chart. That was very helpful, I think, for everyone to see here. I know we went over it in the discipline study group meeting. But one thing I wanted to point out that was striking to me, and I think that it's telling, is that as you moved along the progression, as this conversation we've been having about moving away from zero tolerance, you don't see any mentioning of what they call retributive punishment or consequences. So I think that's the main distinguishing piece here that we are, as you mentioned, kind of lacking. But I think even the terminology of saying retributive as opposed to accountability is something we might want to consider, because students are being accountable, even if they're not going to an ISS or an OSS. But we need to treat our circles as being accountable, right, you're being accountable for your actions. Accountability doesn't have to equate with sort of retributive.
And that's the terminology Oakland uses, too.
I noticed that terminology very different from ours. So I think looking at these models are really helpful for us, and that would help us move forward. And then the other piece tying into that is with the professional study groups and when they do the literature circles. It would be nice to add in a book that pertains specifically to restorative practice and inequities in discipline, just to create some more support and understanding around that as well. So I know you deal a lot with the cultural competency piece, but I don't really see the...
It's a great point. Perhaps you can build that into our updated implementation plan once we meet with the folks from IIRP. By the way, I didn't mention this to the board in closed session, we were discussing discipline, but in two weeks, about two weeks, Ms. Luxa and I, and little do the principals know, the principals, at least at the Middleton High School, are going to be visiting several schools in Brooklyn that a consultant with whom we've been working from IIRP is going to visit along with us. So that'll be an opportunity for me to branch out. The only other, I've only visited one school that is incorporating restorative practices, and that's when we first launched it back in the day. So it's been a while. Yeah, Mr. Magziner?
Yeah, the only thing that I want to add about the move away from zero tolerance is that by moving away from a zero tolerance doesn't mean that we are moving toward tolerance of all types of things. And so we, well, I just want to make sure that the message is loud and clear that there are certain things that could result in the five-day suspension or the 10-day suspension. And, you know, just because it's not zero tolerance doesn't mean tolerance.
Right, and that's where having the discussion with evidence-based documentation as to what this means, what the zero tolerance actually means, just to create some real understanding. And it's not just people's thinking about what should happen based on the way we all learned and grew up and/or learned as educators or parents. So it's really important to go to the evidence, go to the research that's out there, and have clear definitions as to what it means. Because there is a lot of confusion, as you're saying, about what does it mean when we say zero tolerance?
Right, and even inside that room, you know, different opinions, and it's worthwhile having that discussion and getting to where we need to get to.
And I think it's great that you're going to schools that are, you know, not in the middle of nowhere, right there in Brooklyn. Like, they're right there, and they deal with all of the things that we deal with. And to see that there's an alternative way to deal with issues that arise is really transformative. I could imagine they're going to get a lot from that.
Scott, when is that?
We haven't set a date, but it's within the next few weeks, so probably by the next...
If you could, would it be possible to extend an invitation to one or two board members to also attend if someone has the availability?
First time we went, you came with us, Ruth, and somebody else.
Not me.
I went when we went to Fannie Lou Hamer years ago, but that was a little bit different. But I think it really helps to have a board member on some of those trips to just really get a sense of what's going on.
Ruth was at that, and that was a lot of fun. Yeah, we bonded over lunch chats with that. You're a brand-new board member.
Do you happen to remember what schools?
I'm sorry?
Do you happen to remember what schools?
No, but I'll make sure I let the board know. I'll email the board the information and invite. Oh, I want to make one other point, speaking of restorative practices and visiting other schools. So here I am, speaking with you about this, and I'm realizing right now how supportive the board is unanimously to move in this direction. And that's not always the case with boards of education. The other thing I have to be thankful for is the fact that the middle and high school teachers have been so supportive. Ms. Luxa, when she spoke with the consultant that we're now working with, we've been changing consultants, said to me today that as she was, she was being asked questions about the state of things here, it dawned on her that we haven't gotten resistance from faculty about this effort. I mean, on the contrary, if anything, faculty have been crying out for us to do this better, you know, go slower, give us more training. So I'm really thankful for that. I mean that sincerely. So we're blessed. We just have to make sure we do it, we make it happen. All right, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Scott. All right, so we are going to move on to our board committee reports. Start with curriculum and instruction. Michelle?
Okay, so before I start, I just want to say that...
Get closer to your mic again.
I'm sorry, usually I'm so loud. So yeah, we had a pretty quick meeting. It wasn't, you know, this is not curriculum season. So it's pretty light. But we went through, we did the agenda review. We talked about a post-secondary education planning guidebook idea, I guess. It's not fully planned out, how to do this planning guidebook, but the idea was that, you know, we've been hearing from a lot of students saying that they could use more guidance for their college application process and making decisions for their future. So Dr. Taylor suggested that the guidance office put together a guidebook really detailing, you know, when things are supposed to be happening, kind of a calendar of events, but also laying out options that students might take a look at and might not be aware of, especially if they are not from a family who's got college-educated parents or guardians. So even if you do, I mean, I have to say, personally, my husband and I are very well-educated people, have gone to college and beyond. My God, it was not how I remember, you know, I have a senior this year. And so this guidebook was a really exciting idea we talked about in our committee meeting because things are so different. There's so much more required, and everything is digital. So it's a completely different thing to deal with. So I feel like this is really answering a lot of issues as far as equity goes, but, you know, beyond that as well, because there are students that will take a lot from that, hopefully. And I think that Dr. Taylor is behind that idea. The guidance office is in charge of implementing it. So I hope to see that soon. Then we talked about the sixth-grade health program, which just started last week, from what I understand. And we were given a sample lesson, so we went through that. And I guess we were waiting to see how that class went because we did get the sample lesson, but we didn't get much feedback about what the students thought, what the, you know, how the lesson played out. So we also talked about the survey that was supposed to be given to students to identify their interest in extracurricular activities and if transportation from Cedar Ave, Cedar Ave, Cedar Lane, is an impediment to them participating in extracurricular activities. So I think that it was determined with help from the finance committee that we could afford to provide a late bus to those students that would run out at 5:00 p.m., so that they could take part in things after school and still make it home without putting themselves in danger walking through that treacherous trestle. Like, the thought of that, yeah. As a mother, I can't even, you know. So I'm so happy that we found a way to do that and to give those kids transportation. We also had apparently surveys done on, or apparently, I'm sitting here like holding the paper. It was a survey done on honors and AP classes and waivers that are available to students and families that would allow them to waive into those courses. So it's not common knowledge, unfortunately, that students can waive into high school honors and AP courses. So I think what's happened traditionally is students wait for their teachers to say, you are good enough to get into this program, the honors or the AP, in some way, shape, or form. That was the expectation from the students. Now we are putting together a plan to make this a universal message that goes out to everyone so that they know that these waivers are not only something that they can take advantage of, but that we encourage them to give it a shot. You know, the worst thing that happens is you transfer out.
I also want to point out that we're going to include the waiver process in the program of study for the high school, which we've not done before.
Right, yeah, that was important, to make sure that it's as evenly disseminated that information is out there. That was really important to us. So thank you for that. We also talked about this really exciting development where the middle and the high school will be working, the middle school and high school administration, as I understand, will be working together to provide a parent night scheduled for March 7, 2019, that will include translators and childcare so that there will be a conversation and information about the transition from the middle school to the high school and what that means in terms of academics. So, you know, if I, for example, had a student that wanted to study math in college, you know, what should I do as a middle school student preparing to go to the high school? Like, how can I see the landscape of my decision-making to get me to the point where I need to go? So this should help with, you know, goal-setting for families and students. And it's very exciting to see that we are presenting that to the students directly. So the parents, you know, are, of course, included, but that the students are made, you know, aware of what the possibilities are. So the meeting is planned to include the grade eight and nine teachers. I'm sorry, there will be a meeting planned to include grade eight and nine teachers to talk about the students and their needs so that the ninth-grade teachers are not, you know, very first day of school getting to know their students. They have some idea of what their students need and want out of their class. So I think that's a great idea. I'm super excited about that as a board member and a parent, because I do have a child going into ninth grade myself. And that concludes our meeting report. On the agenda, we have a correction on number two. So number one is our regular field trip requests. Some really cool stuff. There's actually an Irving trip going to the State Theater, which I'm so happy about because many, many students, they don't have the ability, the financial ability, to go to a theater and see a live production. So this might be the first experience and maybe, you know, really setting off some fires for theater and music and all kinds of things in their little hearts. So, so excited about that. Number two is the HIB incident report for November. So that's where we're going to make our correction. We're going to table B, C, and D. So the HIB reports that we are going to be discussing and voting on next week are...
No, no, it's tonight.
I'm sorry, just tonight, okay.
We're voting on tonight.
Right. Should be only HS 1819-02, letter A. Number three on the agenda is the approval of the Rutgers University Spring Conversation Cafe program. And just to jog your memories, that is the program that allows Rutgers students, graduate students, I believe, to come into our district and have English as a second language community members join with them in conversation. And they do, I mean, I've seen this personally with friends of mine, that they do learn a lot in those conversations, you know, immersion in a language is really important, but practicing speaking English is what it's really all about. So that is exciting. And that happens January through May. Number four is approval of handle with care training for the staff listed there. And the instructors are in-house instructors, so it's turnkeying education happening, PD. And those folks are listed there. Ashley Allhouse, Suzie Budan, Kimberly Nizolek, sorry if I did not pronounce that correctly, and Anna Shannon. Number five is the approval of handle with care training recertification for those folks that I just listed. So we are training and retraining. Those are numbers four and five. Number six is the approval of the university graduates, graduate students. So they are coming in, in the spring semester to observe. They will not be student teaching, but student observing, if that's a term. And that concludes my curriculum committee report.
Excellent. Anybody have any questions for Michelle? No? All right, then we'll move on to finance with Mark.
Yes, thank you, Darcy. So we met this evening at 6:00 and went over a finance agenda, which included outstanding finance issues as well as items on the agenda. So our first discussion at the meeting was about this late bus proposal. We are going to bid this month for a late bus from the middle high school to Cedar Lane area, with the hope that when we receive bids in March 4th or 5th, they'll be reasonable enough that we can run a bus, which not only gives those students the ability to use the Wi-Fi facilities of the schools, but also do extracurricular, without having to worry about getting home across the railroad tracks effectively. So that would be wonderful, if we could do that. The second item we discussed very briefly is that the security system DVR drive array, which is operating now, is old and is needing replacement for next year. So that'll be an item going forward on our budgets. Item, the next item we discussed, also very briefly, was class sizes in the high school, middle school and high school. That came up last board meeting, when we were discussing the music program and some very small classes. I think it was music theory with four students, and the possibility of doing an advanced music theory course. So we did a quick review of some of the other classes. Dr. Taylor provided us with class sizes across the district. And the finance committee will be reviewing those as part of the budget process in February and March, to see what, you know, what classes we can continue to run, what classes we should continue to run, and also class sizes in all of the school buildings. The next item is, the auditor will be finishing the audit of the school system for submission on February 13th. So the board approval will be on next month's agenda. And there'll be several months' worth of financial reports coming up, the usual approval of bill lists and other financial reports that we'll have to approve at that meeting. Next item was the enrollment. The enrollment is, at this moment, 22 additional students from this time last year, and that equates to 15 students over the number of students we had a month ago. January is a time where a lot of people come into the district. We typically see an increase in the number of students, but the student enrollment has stayed very consistent over the last three or four years, which is probably a good thing. We don't want to decrease population so much, or increase it so much. Neither of those is probably very good for the system. And then the last thing we always review is a list of unforeseen expenses and unforeseen revenues. We are slightly ahead this year, taking those into account. The, one major item that has an overage is summer staffing was $41,000 higher than expected over the past summer. That was offset by the, a reduction in prescription medical insurance to the tune of over $300,000 of savings. In fact, without that savings, we would be behind now in our budget for this year. Typically, as the year goes on, though, we, some items come up where we make savings. We're not spending every penny down to the bone. It'd be unwise financial prudence to do that. So we're carefully looking at each item. Dr. Taylor was saying to us, every item that has to get approved for new spendings is capital spending, he's reviewing. And we're going over the budget of this year's budget very carefully as we go into next year's budget meetings. So that was the report for our committee. And then for our agenda items, items one through six are the typical bill lists, athletic bill lists, cafeteria bill lists, travel and related expense reimbursement reports. Item seven is approval for contractors for professional services. The first four of those are professional development. So we have, we have four different organizations or individuals billing the district or charging the district for professional development services. Items seven, which is home instruction, or I'm sorry, item five, which is home instruction on that list. Items six, which is online courseware for bedside instruction. And then item eight is a learning disabilities teacher consultant. The next three items are musicians for the musical. And then the last item is nursing services. Item eight is approval for bedside instruction. This is for two students who need bedside instructions, typically at out-of-district residency placements. And we discussed this briefly. It's not months and months and months at $48 per hour. These are typically temporary settings, where a student needs to be in a facility because of some illness or whatever, and then comes back into the district. Item nine is approval for a non-public school technology aid, aid equipment purchase. This is a pass-through, meaning we approve it, but the money goes from the state to another school, to another non-public school district, in town. Item 10 is an acceptance of a Sustainable Jersey for Schools grant. It's for $2,000. Again, it's Sustainable Jersey for Schools. It'll be used to support a yoga program at the Highland Park Middle School for staff wellness, and our thanks to Sustainable Jersey for Schools. Item 11 is acceptance of donorschoose.org donations, five iPads valued at $1,661.30 for use in Ms. Drachman's classroom at Bartle School. Again, thank you to donorschoose.org. Item 12 is approval of submission of Title I reallocation grant for fiscal year 2019 to the amount of $12,288. It's a reallocation of Title I carryover funds that weren't used last year, and they'll be used to support arts integration at the middle school. Item 13 is our annual plan update for our preschool program. And this, we discussed this, this is done every year. We have to send this to the state, to the Department of Education. And then items 14 and 15 are quotes and then an agreement to purchase LED lighting for all of our gymnasiums as part of the PSENG Prescriptive Lighting Rebate Program at a cost of $13,820.80. The rebate will be $8,400, netting us a cost of $5,420.80. They have a lifetime, these lights have a lifetime of 10 or more years. So we'll be saving a lot of electric costs. And that's the report.
Excellent. Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
I just wanted to add that, I believe it was Dara who applied for the OGR grant for Sustainable Jersey, so thank you to Dara for that.
Thank you.
Assuming that it was Ms. Drachman who applied for the Donors Choose grant, since that's going to her class, so thank you there as well. Because Sustainable Jersey or Donors Choose, don't just give us money. Our teachers ask them for the money, and then they give us the money. So thank you to the teachers for putting in the time and effort to apply for the grants. Did anybody have any questions for...
Just a quick question. With the summer teacher expenditure and the increase, what was that attributed to? Is that more programming, more participation?
No, it's actually moving money around. I have the notes here from Linda on this. Yes, the, so, so we had a decrease in the available funding from IDEA. We were reduced by $54,000. So that reduction just cycled down, so that the cascading effect was a decrease in the amount that we had, so that we had budgeted it already, and we found ourselves short $41,000, sadly.
We never like when that happens. All right, no other questions for Mark?
I did have a question, but I don't know if it's a question for Mark or for Dr. Taylor. I just really quickly wanted to hear a little bit more about the PD, on the effects of developmental trauma and toxic stress on learners and adults. I wondered if that included information on the ACEs study? Is that what it is?
Well, I, it better. I mean, I'm a pro with that stuff, and that's, that's the foundation of the whole...
Yeah.
...trauma-form movement. But I can, if you, give me one second, I can verify, I'm not sure if you had this information in your packet, who exactly is involved with the professional development?
It says Center for Counseling Services. So I could Google that, but I just wanted to ask you directly if that was, if that was the same information that was regarding the ACEs study.
I think when we talked about it in our agenda meeting, you said that...
We did, you and I.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We, this is for February 5th. This is the day that all of the students will be home. For half the day, all of our teachers will be in whole group instruction workshops, and then the second half of the day, they can be broken out according to subject area. We have special subjects doing something exclusively, world language.
Yeah. It's great to see that on the PD list. I still can't really understand how this hasn't become, like, nationally absorbed, this kind of information about the ACEs study. It's really, it's amazing. So I'm really happy to see that. And really, that's it, that was my question.
Okay, so if nobody else has anything for Mark, we will move on to personnel with Ann.
All righty. Well, I will first say, we are really missing Judy, because she was an experienced manager, hire of personnel, which is not something that I am as familiar with. But we did have our meeting on, I just lost my notes, on January 22nd. It was me and, it was you and I, yes? Just you and I and Scott. We spoke about several confidential personnel matters. We also did, every month, we do a personnel movement review that Judy instituted, where we look at who's transferred, which staff have transferred, which staff have retired, which staff have resigned. The idea being to see if we're seeing any disturbing patterns, you know, that were unable to retain staff in certain areas. And, you know, there was nothing disturbing noticed at this meeting. Scott gave us a heads up, excuse me, this is more, this is not necessarily a personnel matter, but I guess it would become a personnel matter, about the middle school financial literacy course that the state is requiring or is talking about requiring.
Yeah, so this is all the buzz, the thing with superintendents right now, the state to put out a missive that we're going to have to incorporate financial literacy at the middle school. We already incorporated at least one marking period, it might be two, a semester, of financial literacy at the high school, but we've been given no guidelines or framework. So my, I'm the president of the Middlesex County Roundtable. I've invited somebody from the state to come visit us in February, and I'll let the board know if there's anything that comes up, probably through the curriculum committee. But we're going to pepper that person with a lot of questions.
Wonderful. Thank you for your leadership on that. Yeah, I guess that was more curriculum. I think Scott just mentioned it in passing, and I put it into my notes, like an official note-taking thing. Okay, let's see. The agenda items are pretty self-explanatory. We have source for teachers' subs. We have several resignations, unfortunately. Number four, we have a resignation from Ms. Pinto, or Pinto, learning disabilities teacher consultant. And Scott let us know that there is an agency called INVO, presumably like Innovations? I don't know what INVO stands for, but I assume the word is related. Anyway, they'll be taking over until we have a replacement, and we do have someone in place right now from the agency who's an experienced doctoral-level employee. Let's see, some basic medical leave, et cetera. Number nine, the improvement of Mr. Brumel, or Brummel, at Bartle. I think he was originally hired as a substitute, but now he has the appropriate certifications, and so he's being hired as a full-featured music teacher, appropriately certified. Let's see. Number 11, leave replacement Bartle School. That is Ms. Prendergast stepping in for Ms. Maiden as she moves into her role at Bartle of, is it the staff and student support teacher? Is that what we called it, or is it dean of discipline?
No, it's called officially the student and staff support teacher.
Student and staff support teacher, excuse me, okay. So Ms. Prendergast will be filling in for Ms. Maiden, and I understand that that's going really well with Ms. Maiden, so...
And it'll be the dean of retributive?
Dean of Retribution.
Yeah, I get it.
Let's not have one of those.
If anything.
Okay. Got it, yeah. I hear that's going very well. So thank you, Ms. Maiden, to stepping into that role. 12, standard. Number 13, there is a change in the minutes. Ms. Olivera, she, we, I am moving that we extend her, replace her teaching dates. It says here from February 3rd to February 5th. It's actually going to be February 3rd to February 6th, but not including February 5th. So just a change of dates. That's because February 5th is a PD day, and Ms. Olivera won't be there to support the transition to the regular teacher on that date. Number 15, we have Mr., how do you say that, Mr. Morakchek?
Let me go back to it.
Mokrcek?
Olivera.
What?
I'm sorry, number 13.
No 15.
Oh, oh!
That was an interesting pronunciation.
Yes, Mokrsek.
How do you say it?
Mokrsek.
Mokrsek, okay. My apologies. Obviously, my children are not...
Am I right back there? Mr. Mokrsek. I think they, no.
All right, well, anyway. He is stepping in to teach some students with ELL needs, who needed some catch-up math. He's going to be trained in sheltered instruction, I understand. It's some students who are new to our district, and we appreciate him stepping up to take on that extra responsibility. Let's see, professional development. Here's some approvals from PD presenters. The PD catalog is on the website, Scott told me, so I haven't looked at it in a while, but members of the community might be interested to see what PD the teachers are learning. I believe it's mostly teacher-directed, mostly offered by teachers who have special, who have areas of specialties. And I believe that concludes my report. Thank you.
I did want to highlight one thing. I was kind of excited about number 12, which is an increase in hours for our part-time reading instruction specialist. We need, one of the things we still need to work on is our supports for our struggling readers and students that have print-related disabilities. So I was very excited to see an increase in Ms. Stockey's hours.
And I guess Scott said that she's Level 2 Wilson certified, which is unusual or difficult to get.
Hard to come by.
Hard to come by, so we're very grateful to have her.
She's also work Gillingham certified.
Also, aren't you going to?
She's got quite credentials.
Wonderful.
Did anybody have any questions for Ann or Scott on the personnel items? No? All right, so we will move on to policies. Back to Mr. Krieger.
Yes, thank you, thank you again, Darcy. So we met on January 22nd last week. We reviewed a handful of policies. Before we did, we reviewed a resolution proposed by Darcy on the requirements for graduation, the testing requirements for graduation, which Darcy will be presenting later. But the committee went over it, and it looked excellent, so we'll be talking about it tonight later. We reviewed the policy 7422 on pest management. The facilities manager will be responsible in the future for managing that program.
I'm sure Linda's real sad to give that one up.
And, yes.
It's a bummer.
And so that will be on the agenda this evening, with only that change. We reviewed, we started discussing the suicide prevention policy 5350. Darcy had sent us a model policy from Amy Seville, from the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. So not only did our policy need improvements, both per missing items and per state regulation and law, but it was not up to standards in a lot of other ways, if you review the, this American Foundation for Suicide Prevention's model policy. So we discussed that, and we'll be hopefully putting it on the agenda for next month's review and first reading. The next item we discussed, which is on the agenda, is policy number 5200, attendance for students. So we discussed it around a couple of topics. One of them is that the policy that we had some needs in it had to do with loss of credits or retention of students for missing classes. And so we put in much stronger wording for that policy around the administration reviewing those policies, much, the incidences much, much more carefully, number one, so that students don't lose credit unless it's a very, very serious loss of attendance. And the other one is the issue that in our lateness policy, three latenesses count as an attendance loss. So you could be late a handful of times and start losing credit, and the committee didn't feel that was fair. So what we agreed to do was put the policy on the, on the agenda for first reading tonight, but in our next meeting, we are going to, which is, I think in a week, we're going to discuss the lateness policy and try to make changes to that, that can work better with the attendance policy. For instance, a suggestion at the meeting was, instead of three latenesses equals an absence, perhaps the student who's absent all the time has a meeting with the teen center or school psychologist, try to understand why the student is late nine times or 12 times, as opposed to penalizing the student, being punitive. So we're just going to discuss that and come up with some better, better policy ideas around that. We agreed to table policy 22, 2622, around student assessment, since the state is not, is now revising the standards on student's assessment. So we won't take that up again until, until that time, until the state makes a change. And then the last item we discussed with our, was items... And then the last item we discussed with our, was items, was policy 2422 on health and physical education. There were changes that were needed by per-state regulation, again, and changes in law, but at least two of us noticed that the state talks about safe sex, being required to discuss abstinence as the only solution for safe sex, and that we thought there were other alternatives that we could add to that as perhaps not 100% safe, but alternatives to teach the students. So we're, we made some changes to the wording in that policy. And that's it. And 2422, 5200, and 7422 are on the agenda, all three of those for first reading. They don't become a policy until next month, assuming we pass them tonight, and then we pass them again next month. So that's it.
We'll just pass them for first reading tonight.
First reading tonight.
On, on two of those, on 2422 and on the other one, I noticed a couple just kind of housekeeping things.
They were housekeeping.
That all point out to you at another time. We won't take it public time.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, yeah, no, just like, you know, like the.
You mean wording, wording stuff?
Yeah, and some stuff that, other language that still has to come out, because in some places it still refers to the curriculum content standards and.
I see.
And it's not the New Jersey state learning standards, it's the New Jersey student learning standards.
Okay.
Just clean up language.
Thank you.
Yeah, maybe we got an older version or something, so maybe, yeah, maybe, so maybe you have an even more updated version. Well, the comment, the CCCs was taken out in some places, but it was still there in others, so.
It looks, oh, yeah, okay.
It just needs to be cleaned up a little bit.
Just submit an email or whatever.
I will. Or, like I said, maybe Scott has a more updated version.
That would be good.
But didn't make it onto the drive, so I'll check that before I bother you with that. All right, anybody have any questions, comments, concerns with those policies?
Not a comment or concern, a comment about another policy. I know Ruth, you had talked about how schools are reviewing their restraint and seclusion policies. Did you mention that to me?
Yeah, yeah. But I didn't do the research.
No, no, I wasn't asking. What research should you do? I was wondering if that's something that we should discuss at the next policy meeting, perhaps?
What is the policy? I'm sorry.
About restraint and seclusion.
Oh, restraint and seclusion.
Stress estimate has been asking us, you know, to, it acts as a policy, we do not have one, and I guess Ruth said that there's been a lot in the news lately about other districts revising. So maybe it's something we could talk about, and maybe some of us could bring our research.
It's helpful when it's in the news and other districts are in process of revising.
Yes, yeah.
I'll talk to Scott.
That'd be great, thank you.
I'll talk to Scott, and I think we're meeting on February 5th.
So that's coming right up. At least have a preliminary discussion.
I'll, I'll just, sorry to know, thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't, I wasn't trying to call you out on the research. Just wanted to make sure we got on these.
Okay, if there isn't anything else for Mark, then we will move on to equity and excellence with Monique.
Yes, we met last Thursday, and we had a lot on our plate, a lot in my notes here, but much of it has already been kind of touched on between curriculum committee notes and Scott's presentation, but so I'll try to just look at some things that we didn't already discuss. We spent a lot of time talking about the honors AP waiver data. Dr. Taylor did share with us actually last year's waiver data, and just a couple of takeaways that we had discussed and we want to continue discussing that we noticed is that most of the students waving into these classes, AP or honors in both cases, are white and Asian, because the data that Dr. Taylor presented to us did focus on the racial demographics of the waiver population, and that's pertaining to which students are actually, did seek the waivers. And in terms of numbers, in the honors numbers, we had 21 students, again, last year's data, 28% Asian, 4.7% Black, 9.5% Latino, 14.28% multiracial, and 42.8% white. And with the AP numbers, we noticed a total of 33 students, 42% Asian, 6% Black, 3% Latino, and 45.5% white. And the reason why, for obvious reasons, we looked at the demographic data, and that's because the whole reason why we are pushing to make sure that more students are getting access to these classes and are really discussing how kids can waiver in is because we're looking to reduce the racial disparities in our higher, more rigorous classes. So again, what was, what we seem to take away the most is that we haven't yet made the sort of dent into increasing the amount of participation amongst students of colors in these classes. So we want to, you know, continue to look at that data, analyze it, and see what can be done to improve it. And this did lead to the discussion about the middle school to high school pipeline, which, you know, has been touched on extensively already. But a couple of things we do also want to follow up is looking at the comparative data. We talked about getting this year's numbers, who's waving in, what the class compositions are looking like, and I know Scott's been really good at every meeting with whatever requests, we request bringing that to us. So we're going to look forward to really taking a deeper dive into that data going forward. We also talked about, in terms of the middle school to high school pipeline, I do want to add a couple of things, or maybe just one or two things that Michelle may not have mentioned, that may not have been discussed in curriculum construction, and that is that there's going to be an academic fair on the horizon for 8th to 11th graders, which is really exciting. Basically, Dr. Taylor presented kind of four strategies for addressing the middle school to high school pipeline, and we're talking about the pipeline to rigorous coursework, not the other pipeline that we hear about all the time. And the academic fair is one of those initiatives. It's going to be a series of days during phys ed period, I believe, in the gym, where students have stations around particular subject areas, and two or three students per table will sort of present the particular class that that table is focused on, providing information to their peers, similar to like a club, you know, extracurricular club day where kids do rah rah for their club and try to recruit other kids. In this instance, it'll be academic subjects and trying to recruit and bring exposure to classes to their peers. So that was really exciting to hear, and I think very innovative. So the, so then moving along to that, from that discussion, we talked about also the upcoming CJ Pride, Central Jersey Pride Consortium, which we recently joined, I believe just at the end of last year, and it's a local consortium of school districts that pull together their resources to seek recruitment of minority and underrepresented staff in schools, and we recently joined. Scott's excited about, Dr. Taylor, I should say, is excited about attending the first organizational meeting. That was last Friday, actually, so this is past tense now, so we can't wait to hear how that went. And CJ Pride has minority recruitment fairs fairly regularly, maybe twice a year, three times a year, I'm not sure, but they do have one coming up in March that Dr. Taylor will be attending. So we're looking forward to, you know, hearing back from him on that and hopefully seeing the results in our hiring. We also talked about the late bus, which has been touched on, and we did look at also reviewing the suspension data from 2017, 18, and 2018, 19, what we have so far, for Bartle and the high school. Why did I say Bartle? Was that the middle and high school? Maybe I meant to say middle and high school. Yeah, I think we were just looking at middle and high school, and I have to look back on that, the charts. But what we, again, what you discussed, Scott, is what we talked about in our meeting, and that is that, you know, we're trying to see ourselves move more in alignment with restorative practice and having our discipline policies reflect that. We talked about the importance of establishing connections and networks with other school districts, whether they're in New Jersey or not. I think we have to look beyond New Jersey, obviously, when it comes to restorative practice, because there just aren't a lot of districts locally doing it. And, you know, we talked about even for Dr. Taylor to establish a network of administrators that you can share strategies with and get feedback on best practices, and just for support. And that is basically it. We tabled a discussion about the upcoming, the recently updated memorandum of agreement between education and law enforcement officials. We just didn't get time, we didn't have time to get to that, but I also think you were looking at getting some more information about that, if I'm correct.
Actually, I have an update. So the deal, we got back to me to say that we can make, we cannot make changes to the document itself, but we can add the dentum.
But it can't contradict once we agree to.
Additions to the, to the, to the document. So we should discuss that at the next meeting.
Perfect.
And I guess the next step would be, would be for me to reach out to the chief potentially or his representative and have a palow.
That would be great. And just really quick about that before we discuss it in our meeting, do we, did you find out if we have to sign on to the memorandum of agreement? I think that was the first question.
Yeah, it's actually a regulation that we have to enter into a memorandum of agreement with police, law enforcement. And the next question was, well, do we have to use this document? And they said, yes, but you could add to it.
Okay. So I have a feeling that'll take up most of our discussion at our next meeting.
So we can amend it, crazy if we would like.
Okay. And that about does it for me.
I do want to add that on February, before our next, around our next board meeting, I'll be able to follow up my experiences at a conference I'm going to in Atlanta called the Reach Whole School Reform Conference. It's all about equity, and Mrs. Ossempia actually turned me on to it after she went to a similar conference at Teachers College, so hopefully have a lot to share with the Equity Committee and the Board.
And networking, that's a great opportunity, network.
Yeah. Good place to put together that cadre of superintendent.
That's right. Your virtual superintendent network.
All right, great. So does anybody have any questions for Monique? No? All right, so then we will move on to public comment. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation, has reserved this time for your comments. If you have, would like to make a public comment, please go up to the podium, state your name and address. If you're an adult, if you're a student, you can just say, hi, my name is so-and-so and I'm a student. And please, there should be a sign-up sheet right there. Write your name down for the board secretary so she can record it for the minutes.
And students only have to give name and grade, not address, right?
That's what I said.
Okay, that's, it just went by so quick.
Yes, I do speak fast, sorry, I'm Italian.
Hi, I'm Julia Marks. This is Bella and Rebecca, and we're on the track team, so we wanted to discuss, I guess, the new hiring of a track coach for the spring season. So we've heard that at least one coaching position is open for the 2019 spring season due to the resignation of Coach Ruck. We'd like to thank Ruck for all the work they've done as coaches. We're glad to hear that Coach Roy, who's an amazing coach, will be staying. We're really fortunate to have him. We recently learned that Chuck Sneclyth, who was our coach from the winter of 2015 to the spring of 2018, has applied for an open position. Over the past four years, Coach Chuck has provided us with enormous support, both on and off the track. We understand that the school's hiring policy requires that coaching positions be offered to teachers within the district before being offered to those outside the district, but we hope you will consider the following before hiring a coach for the 2019 season. We feel incredibly lucky that a small school like Highland Park has the opportunity to once again work with an experienced, high-level coach like Chuck. In addition to coaching high school teams, Chuck has coached both college and national teams. He's USATF, United States Association of Track and Field, Level 1 and 2 certified, and he runs the Garden State Track Club, which has many nationally-ranked athletes among its members. He himself is also a nationally-ranked athlete and has the experience to help all of us. The training and support that Coach Chuck gave us when he was our coach in prior years was invaluable, and it built on the great foundation we got from Mr. Roy. This helped our girls team win two Group 1 state championship titles and a sectional title. Along with Mr. Roy, he's pushed us all to do our best over the years, and we know he will do the same for all the Highland Park athletes who come after us. We know this because even though he currently isn't coaching for Highland Park, Coach Chuck has continued to help us train in collaboration with Coach Roy. Chuck knows many college coaches personally, and his understanding of the college recruitment process and his willingness to help us with the process has been incredibly helpful. Last year, seniors won spots on the track and field teams at Rutgers, Delaware, and Williams. This year, our seniors have offers to join Williams, Rutgers, Rider, and Delaware teams. And one of our junior athletes is being recruited by schools like Stanford and Princeton. Even though, sorry, even though Chuck was not a Highland Park coach this year, he continued to help us with the athletic recruitment process. Currently, there are several other athletes who have the potential to earn spots and scholarship money, and we would like them to have the same advantages and support that we had. As both individuals and a team, we are concerned that there is a possibility that we and the future, and future Highland Park student athletes will miss out on the opportunity to work with a world-class coach and lose critical college connections and support. We hope you take our comments into consideration when making your hiring decision. Thank you. And just to add, we have signatures of a few members of the team who have offered their support, so we'll read them out. There's Rebecca Ochan, class of 2020, Julia Marks, class of 2019, Bella Godish, class of 2019, Ben Godish, class of 2021, Ethan Gildenberg, class of 2020, Julia Woodward, class of 2020, and Anya St. Martin, class of 2020.
If you'd like, you can give us a copy of that, and we'll make a copy and give you back your original?
Yes.
Thank you for coming out, ladies.
Hello, Jim Godish. I have to say, my kids have been very lucky to have such great sports programs throughout their time here in Highland Park. Starting with Eric Davis, he's really the one that introduced my kids to running with the rec running program. To me, it doesn't seem that long ago that my kids and a few others were running the three-mile Winter Hot Chocolate Series in Long Branch, or the superhero run in Somerville. Once they got their start with Eric, they found themselves running quite a lot more races throughout the state and occasionally New York. It was during this time that their running really improved, thanks to Keith Roy and Tim Stark. We owe a lot to both coaches. They offer so much to all of our athletes, both on and off the field, always encouraging them to achieve their goals. They've done this for my own kids countless times, and I am truly indebted to both. But I'm here tonight to speak about another coach, Chuck Schneekloth, who began coaching here when my daughter was a freshman. She's now a senior. Anyone who is a runner, especially here in New Jersey, knows that Chuck is highly qualified and passionate about not only helping people become better runners, but he also has a wealth of information and connections to help with any track ambitions our students may have for college. His guidance was a big factor in helping my daughter understand what to expect when starting the process of looking at colleges to actually conversing with interested coaches. To receive this amount of guidance for your own kid is a true gift, and as much as I am thankful for Eric and Keith and Tim, I am equally thankful for Chuck. It's my hope that you consider rehiring Chuck for this coming spring season and beyond. Highland Park schools will be better for it. Thank you.
Scott, is there anything you want to add about the coaching hiring process, or where the district is in that, or?
No, I mean, I know, happen to know Mr. Schneekloth as a runner, but I need to remind everyone that we have a process, and the process involves us first posting the position internally for five days and allowing our candidates from inside the school district, teachers who also might want to step up to the coaching position to apply. We will interview them, consider their qualifications, and if we must, we can go outside and seek folks from outside the school district to apply. So what we'll do is, of course, advertise if we must after the five-day period, probably on the websites and whatnot. But I'll tell you what, I'll make a point to have Mr. Lassiter send Mr. Schneekloth the advert if we do go ahead and post after the five-day window.
And when is all this happening? Is this, or?
We just posted today, I think, for the first day. So the clock ticks starting today, five days, and we go from there.
So if the best candidate is an outside candidate, that person would not be considered unless there's a, not a qualified candidate?
Correct. Correct.
Is that, is that what we want?
I'm sorry?
Is?
It's a contractual obligation.
Oh, it's.
And I could discuss that with you.
Okay.
At some point, if you'd like, I could provide more details about it.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Rob Scott, and I'm here mostly because I kind of want to live in a utopian community where my kids go to a school where the basic wisdom of, well, if you gotta go, go, applies. So I'm here to speak on the new urination handbook pass policy, or as Dr. Taylor pointed out, new for the middle school, but apparently ancient for the high school. So the other thing I would like. Uh, so the other thing I would like, um, is, again, in an ideal world, uh, is that when policy was made, problems were first identified, um, and we could hear what the actual problem was, um, before solutions were bandied about. So the new policy in the middle school has the kids bring their agenda up and sign out every time, uh, they go to the bathroom. This allows the teacher to see if they signed out to go to the bathroom in other classes during the same day. Uh, so I asked Mrs. O, what was the reason for the policy, and I was given two reasons. Um, that one, it was to allow the stu-the teachers to identify potential, quote, "medical" issues, um, and no further specifics were given there. Uh, the next was for teachers to identify students who were having avoidance issues, uh, I think presumably of class. Um, those were the only two reasons given. Um, I asked Ms. O if she would reconsider the policy. She said no. Um, I then corresponded with Dr. Taylor, and one more reason was given, which is apparently there were some cases of vandalism in the bathroom. Uh, so what I want to say first is that the reasons given for this policy seem really fairly weak, um, and what we seem to be getting is, um, new reasons cropping up. So medical and avoidance were a little vague, now we have vandalism, um, and now, well, if you go on the Highland Park Parents Facebook group, there's paranoia about all kinds of safety issues, um, from jeweling to sex in the bathrooms to drug dealing, so on and so forth. And I think this is a little overwrought, and I'm kind of disappointed in it because I think policy should be made based on a clear-headed description of actual problems. And I just don't see any evidence having been put forward that there was an actual Sorry, I have some notes here. So we've gone from, "The teachers need this for some vague reasons," to, "There's a safety-vandalism crisis in the middle school bathrooms." Uh, Dr. Taylor pointed out that this policy has been in place in the high school for a long time and that no one had a problem with it. Well, I'll tell you why I didn't have a problem with it. I didn't know about it. I had no clue. The only way I was going to know about it is if my kid told me. And my kid came into the high school in ninth grade, was told this is the way it is, and basically accepted it. And now that we've talked about it, I've learned about how he copes. Some teachers enforce it, some don't. He goes to the bathroom during certain classes. Um, I asked, "Are the kids jeweling in the bathrooms all the time?" And he said, "Well, I've never seen it. I have one friend who's seen it." Um, but he said, uh, "They lock the bathrooms, so sometimes I've had to leave the classroom and wander around all the, all the school to find an unlocked bathroom, and that's apparently to prevent kids from going into the bathroom when they're not supposed to." So the model in the high school seems to be this, one of, "There are bathroom crimes going on that we need to prevent," um, which I find unfortunate. So what I would say is, I think this is a bad policy for the middle school. I also think it's a bad policy for the high school, and I'd ask that it be overturned in the high school, too. When it comes down to it, sort of a basic, private, you know, we're pro-freedom area is the bathroom. And I think it's an area where we can give our young people, uh, agency to make decisions about themselves. Who signed out for the bathroom if there was a case of vandalism is going to provide no evidence whatsoever about who actually did it. Um, and I think it would be sad if that's why we're pursuing something like this. So if I got up in front of my 150 freshmen, uh, at Rutgers, and I said, "We've got a bathroom policy in this class, you all need to sign out with me." Uh, "Oh, and by the way, you need to bring your pass, and when you sign out with me, I'm going to check and see all the other times you went to the bathroom today," that would be ridiculous. Now, college is not high school. Um, but I've had students who are 17, and there are, you know, students in high school who are 18 and 19. Uh, so college is not high school, um, but these are young people who are very soon going to be making all of their decisions. And I think, um, if we as a community, to give them a little agency, at least when it comes to the bathroom, would not be a bad idea. Uh, middle school and high school are also not the same. So I think to argue that a high school policy, just because it exists, is appropriate for the middle school is a little bit problematic. Okay, I know I've gone on, I'm just going to be brief with three reasons why I think this is a terrible idea.
Of course, you can't give us a top 10. Come on, a top 10.
Three. They say you're supposed to do three.
All right.
So number one, it's gross. Okay? Um, it's the E-call-a-handbook. Now, apparently, Ms. O pointed out that, well, the, uh, pass is gross, too, right? But the pass is laminated, and the pass could in fact be wiped down, okay? Um, in fact, the students could learn a little public health thing of wipe down the pass, right? Agendas are not so easy to wipe down. The other thing is you carry your agenda around all day with you. You're only exposed to the, uh, pass for a short period of time. Uh, there's a faculty member at Rutgers who did the, uh, famous study on the five-second rule, um, and basically what he says, if it's on the floor for five seconds, it's like, it's bad. The five-second rule doesn't work. But the fine print is, one second is better than two. Two is better than three, okay? So some contact with the hall pass is probably better than the dirty agenda all day long. Um, that said, what my kids were really upset about, is they said, "It's gross." Because the bathroom's gross. They don't have a place to put it down, right? Um, so I got the stories about, "Yeah, I stuffed it in my bra," right? I don't think we need this. So number one, it's gross. Number two, and this is a, uh, I think it's actually a more serious health concern, um, I was sick in September and October because my kids brought something home from the school. They were sick. The attendance record looks horrible, okay? This was a virus or a cold or something like that. Now, the number-one thing that we could do in this entire community to prevent the transmission of viruses and colds and all those things that make us sick is if every kid in the school washed their hands more, right? Washing their hands once a day is good, twice a day is better, three times is better, 10 is even better. Now, the only time that the kids are going to wash their hands is when they go to the bathroom. So the number-one, you know, pro-health reason to not have this policy is we want the kids to go to the bathroom, so they don't get sick, so they come to school, so they learn. Uh, and I already know from having talked to my own, having talked to some of their friends, they've started to alter their bathroom habits, okay? So my daughter tells me, "I don't go as often." That's one daughter. The other daughter tells me, "Uh, well, I used to have to go in ninth period, but I've been avoiding that." Okay? So the kids are changing their behavior. I mean, that's one of the goals of a policy, is to get people to change their behavior. But if that behavior means they're washing their hands less, I think that's a loss for us. The third reason, um, and my kids are a little bit less upset about it because I think they've just come to expect it, uh, but it really rankles me. It seems authoritarian, nanny-state, watching over everyone, like there's this need to know when everyone goes to the bathroom. And not just when they went to the bathroom, but how many times they went to the bathroom, and if they went to the bathroom in period one and period two, and, oh, there's a correlation between, uh, period three and period nine bathroom use. I don't think it's necessary, and I don't think it extends the kind of thing to the kids in the community that says, "You're growing up, you're going to be adults, you can take responsibility, uh, and we can trust you." So I guess what I would ask is that not only the policy be overturned, but the whole thing be reconsidered, um, to give something that, uh, offers the kids the chance to take, uh, more responsibility and, uh, learn accountability, um, uh, first with when it comes to their own bladder. Thank you.
Rob, did you sign in on the sheet?
I did.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name's Andrew Zappo. Uh, thank you guys for all your service, first of all. Um, I'm also here to talk about the bathroom policy. You guys were talking about it when I walked in, so I didn't know if it was brought up. But one of the things that's occurred to me is I wanted to know if there had been any thought about how the agenda is more useful as an accountability item for the student's welfare and where they are, as opposed to a sign-out sheet in the event of a fire drill or a lockdown. Because if they have the agenda with them and something happens, then the teacher's required to remember, "Oh, that student is out there, but I don't have a sign-out sheet to tell me where they are." So it's, it's something to take back to Mrs. O so she can consider that, because I think that's really a big place where something's missing here. Because my student, my, I have two boys, um, and they've told me, you know, "I forgot about it," or "I don't do this," or "I take my friends." You know, they're missing the item that is, you know, going to give those, the teachers, what they need to know in the event of a crisis. We don't want that in the district, nobody wants to have to deal with it, but unfortunately, we know it happens, so it's something to consider. Um, the other thing I had a question about was, and I was thinking about this, Dr. Taylor, in regards to, uh, the presentation you did, is that one of the bullet points to the far-left of, about the progress that needs to be made is decisions being made without the student's input. And this policy was put into place without the student's input, especially at the middle school level. And it seems to me, you want to move that needle further to the right. This is something that needs to go back to the middle school for their input, because this is a way that you guys can show Highland Park's really thinking about what they're trying to do, and this is a good place to start. So that's all I got. Thanks very much.
Thank you. I had a concern similar to yours, which is, I have seventh grade, two in seventh grade. I've been trying like heck all year to get my girls to use their agenda to actually track their homework. What a crazy idea, right? I had no idea it was being used for this alternate purpose. I was like, "If we're going to encourage agenda use, can we encourage agenda use so I can see what my kids' homework is every night?" I didn't even know this other thing was going on. I had no idea. But it's kind of using it for this thing it's not intended for, but they're not using it for the thing that it is intended for. So if we're, as a district, are spending all this money on agendas as glorified bathroom passes, that strikes me as really bizarre. I mean, we're supposed to be buying agendas so that we can teach kids to be responsible about their assignments, and they can use self-agency there, not so they can use self-agency to go to the bathroom.
You know, I saw some of the teachers, or at least one teacher remarked that now the students are using their agendas more because they have to have them with them, which I could see it as a benefit. On the other hand, my child was like I was, growing up in sixth and seventh grade, and immediately lost it when he left it in the bathroom at some point, and it went back later and it wasn't there. So, you know, it didn't really help him. I realize that, you know, it's his own fault, he lost his agenda, but, you know, we're talking about sixth graders, they lose things. I certainly can't really criticize, given my own track record.
Right, so, uh, do you want to reiterate the, the steps that you were saying or the next steps in this process that you've?
The faculty will be meeting with Mrs. Oseme within the next couple of weeks. I'd like them to discuss the concerns that, uh, Mr. Scott and one other parent brought to my attention. Um, and, uh, perhaps I'll pull out a little bit of the video from tonight's recorded, recorded, uh, meeting and share that with Mrs. Oseme as well, so she could present that to the full faculty. We have a couple of middle school teachers in the audience, but, um, maybe it's best that the entire faculty hear exactly what our parents tonight have had to say, and we'll go from there.
I just, I thought of something when Andrew was speaking about democratizing the process. Um, I think that's a big part of what, you know, the Curriculum Committee, uh, talks about in a indirect way. You know, democratizing, um, our classrooms, democratizing our workplaces, you know, the teachers, um, being involved in that, democratizing our board work, making sure we get input from everyone, and that everyone's voice is, is, um, included in the decision. So I really want to kind of highlight what Andrew said about democratizing our school buildings, um, because that is teaching by example, showing kids that their opinions matter. Um, and, and I would love to see students, like we saw tonight, come to board meetings and speak up, um, about all kinds of topics. Um, unfortunately, we don't get to see a lot of that. We, we don't even have our student rep tonight because we have midterm week. So, um, yeah, I would, I would love to see, um, more of that in every aspect. Um, but yeah, especially things like this, but they're not policies that come from the board. This bathroom policy didn't come from the board. Um, and, and frankly, I'm kind of, I don't know how to say it, I mean, without being dramatic, but I feel a little bit disturbed by the fact that I've had kids in the district for how many, ever many years I've had them, and I've never really heard about these decisions until after the fact. It's not a community conversation, not everything has to be a community conversation, but, you know, it would be nice to, um, be very, uh, what's the word, like confident that we're all striving for the same things. And I think that as a community, we would like to democratize, uh, more than create an authoritarian, you know, top-down type, um, community. So that's my understanding, that's my assumption. I hope that that's right, because otherwise I got to move. But, um, you know, I, I just really wanted to say that I second his, his, his motion there.
Um, before you meet with Ms. O and the teachers, can you make sure to reach out to that student and get a copy of that petition? And when you get a copy of that student petition, get it to the board. No, no, no. We have this one now from these students about the track coach, but there was one that I was made aware of, uh, but from middle school students about the bathroom policy.
Can I make one, uh, additional comment? Um, I know, I did notice, uh, two things, actually. One, one of the teachers, at least here, said that she has a discreet way of managing the policy, which is a student raises his hand, and then the student can just write down the teacher's initials, which sounds like a great idea, and it makes me wonder, why don't we just go back to the sign-out? You know? I mean, I'm, I'm fine with my kid saying like, "I'm going out," um, but I'm not fine with my kid having to take his agenda up to the teachers, "Please sign out, blah, 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 blah." So, you know, if we're, if teachers are having to sort of like, uh, you know, tweak the system to make it, uh, sort of appropriate, it seems like maybe we should just go to a different system. My, my other thought was, you know, in speaking about this with my kids, I, it's possible the administration would be surprised by the good ideas kids have about the underlying problem if they were asked. I mean, you know, we saw some of the, uh, responses from the administration about, you know, "This will allow us to, allow the school nurse to be aware of medical issues." I mean, I guess there's some idea that the school nurse would look at the bathroom log and determine that my child, you know, urinates too much or something. Um, my guess is that the real motivator is probably bad behavior in the bathrooms. And, you know, as I talk to my kids about this, you know, they have ideas about this. Uh, you know, they might be terrible ideas, they might not be, but if the problem is jeweling, let's talk about jeweling. If the problem is graffiti in the bathrooms, let's talk about that. If the problem is that people are in there for three hours on their cell phones, you know, that's, that's a problem. So maybe ask the students. And I do appreciate all the teachers who've worked with this policy to make it sort of not embarrassing for the students.
Hi, I'm Dara Bodvinnick. I teach sixth grade English, and I didn't intend to speak, I was just coming to hear the conversation. Um, and I think it's a worthwhile conversation. I think, uh, the intent of the policy was not a punitive one, and I think it speaks to our good community that we can talk about it and bring it up. Um, I was the one who wrote that comment. Um, the way I ask students to leave the classroom is, I don't need to know why you're leaving the classroom, I just, "I'm too busy teaching and communicating and we're working, so this just means you're leaving for any reason." And in support of the policy, I just nod, or I say, "One second if I nod," they just take out their pen and they initial it themselves, and they know my initials, and I haven't had an issue, um, with it. So I think there's some balance that needs to be created between, you know, are we a tiny, tiny, private school, which is the ideal and the utopic situation where, um, there needs to be no accountability where students are going? Um, I guess you do need that in a private school as well. Um, so how do you appropriately hold people accountable but yet give them their privacy? Um, so for me, that's my way of doing it. So I just wanted to bring that forward, that I, um, just give permission, a quick permission, and like, um, I would never say no, I would just say, "One second," and we even go through, like, if you really, it's all body language, so it's really fast, and then they just leave. Um, but if there's a systemic issue where, um, students need to be held accountable for where they are, um, ever since I've been going to school, there's been a pass system, so I'm really open to, uh, the conversation and, uh, think it's a good one. So just wanted to bring up my way of, um, working with it, and, uh, it has not been a distraction in my classroom, uh, to my knowledge, um, but I'm always open to hearing if anyone's behavior has changed because of it, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, something I wanted to say about that.
Is there any more public comment?
So if I could say something about the? Oh, let, I'm sorry, that's really rude, I apologize. Give it to myself. Give it to myself.
I'm Karen Marks, and I'm the parent of two girls who have come through the Highland Park School System. My oldest child went to Harvard, and Julia, my youngest child will be going to Williams. I think all the emphasis and a lot of the conversation here, and some of this was alluded to briefly, such as in high school guidance for college applications. Also, I heard something about small class sizes and reviewing them. One of the things that I think we sometimes lose perspective of in this district is, in part, we are preparing children for what comes after high school and what's next. And that's one of the reasons I think the girls in the track team have felt so strongly about track. I don't think we would have considered applying to Williams if we had not had the encouragement of the people on the track team, including Coach Chuck, but also Keith Royg and the other teachers who have been on the track team as well. I don't think that we would have thought of that. And I think that reaches out to a lot of children who might not shine academically, that they may shine in different areas, such as track or music. And so I think there is, when we know that we have some good resources in those areas, we should take advantage to them. Now, I know that if Chuck cannot be hired because of contractual issues, perhaps there might be some way to find a grant to help with a volunteer track person or coordinator, especially at that level, because we do have children in this school who are very capable of going on to track and college, either at the Division I, II, or III level. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I was also listening and not really planning on saying anything, but a couple of comments were made that I think were quite encouraging, so I just wanted to kind of reiterate those. My daughter Gabriela graduated last year. I still have one child in the district, CJ, who's a senior this year, who will be participating in track in the spring as he is in the winter. And I also have the good fortune to know the young ladies here who spoke, who I think made an excellent argument on behalf of Chuck. All I can say as a parent, and I think Mrs. Marks mentioned this as well, as a parent, it was, he opened the eyes of my daughter, at least, to the possibilities after college in a sport that's not something that she had really focused on before. She had had some success. Mr. Royg was a fan, is a fantastic coach, both in soccer and in track. And in track, he encouraged her and really helped her develop at one of the events that she was performing in. But I think Chuck's dedication and really knowledge of the process, not just the training, which is a critical thing, but also what comes next? If you're a striver, if you want to succeed, what comes next? Now, those of you who I've spoken in front of before, no academic lab, also, you know, want to always remember that there are strivers in this community that we have to make sure we look out for just as much as we have to look out for plenty of other students who might not be of the same level of performance focus. But in track, as an example, I think we've seen that, that focus and that dedication has really paid off. Contractually, obviously, we have to support, we should support our teachers and those who have that interest and have that, those same qualifications. I think certainly Chuck's qualifications speak for themselves. I happen to be a classmate of Eric Davis's from high school here, and I also know that he is an even better person than he is, both a track coach and a track competitor. So if his name, if he ends up putting his name in, I have no idea if he's going to, and a Highland Park faculty member has to be considered a priority. I would love to know that he gets equal consideration as well. But just reiterating what everyone said, I think you mentioned before, democratization, so let's make sure we recognize that these folks have all made an effort. I'm here on behalf of my daughter, who, you know, again, no skin in the game anymore, she's gone, but there is no doubt in my mind that she would not be competing at all in track, Division I, II, or III. She happens to be at Rutgers now, at all, if, if the connections that Chuck has and the way to think about it in the recruiting process hadn't worked out. She did very well in an event that was Keith's specialty, but quite frankly, I think it was the, the focus and the experience that Chuck brought that really helped open her eyes to that. And I think that's something that we obviously want to reward other kids in town with that opportunity to pursue those dreams, and dreams they might not even have had yet. So just add me to that voice, and both on behalf of Chuck and to the extent that we're focused on a Highland Park person, Eric Davis, should he apply? Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Any other public comment?
Can you please explain the hiring pause?
Could you just state your name for the?
Rebecca Ochan.
And make sure you write it down, too, Rebecca. Thank you.
Oh, should I ask the question again?
Can.
Can you please explain the hiring policy?
So the first step is to print an advertisement for the position, which Ms. Odado, my secretary, usually does, and we play email it to all the staff, and we put it up on the bulletin boards in the faculty rooms. And it's, so it's just for the faculty in the district. We put a deadline on the advertisement, and it's five days that people have until the deadline passes to submit a resume or a letter of interest. The next step, this is still all happening before we actually advertise anywhere outside of the school district. We interview any candidates from inside the school district. If they're determined to be qualified for the position, we recommend them to the board. If we don't, then we go another round of advertising, and that usually happens on certain websites that we use, like NHJ, schooljobs.com. We also put it on our website, and then we go through the whole process again. Now, that second round, there's no deadline. We don't have to do it within five days. We can determine, you know, how long we want to go. Usually, we'll wait a week or two, no more than two weeks, for people to submit their interest. So a lot of times, people, through word of mouth, hear about job openings here, you know? So even, I mean, the reality is, even if we advertise in our school district, eventually a friend tells a friend, tells a friend, and as soon as those five days are up, if nobody's been hired internally, even before we advertise outside, we sometimes get applications from people from outside. So I think, I hope that clarifies the process for you. Do you have any questions about that?
I just wanted to ask, are you hiring coaches based on what they can offer to student athletes, or based on where they work?
In other words, are you asking what the definition of qualification is? That's a good question. And we're looking for, look, the bottom line is, we want the best people to work with you guys, period. So there's, it's one thing to be able to do a job, it's another to be able to do it really well. We want people to do their jobs really well. I don't accept mediocrity. That applies to hiring teachers as well as coaches. Does that make sense? I'm trying, I'm trying to give you a direct answer.
Yeah. I just want to emphasize that we're concerned that if you hire a teacher that has less qualifications, then it can penalize mine and other student athletes on the track team to further connections with scholarship money with colleges, and because we all know that college is very expensive. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Anyone else? Mr. Presti?
Keith Presti, president of the Highland Park Education Association. And I'm sure that I speak for the board as well as myself when I say it's nice to have a lot of company here.
It is. Fabulous.
Usually, it's just us hanging out, and it's really been nice to hear from students and the community on lots of issues, so, you know, I encourage more people to come out to the board meetings and keep us company.
Yes.
I simply want to say, wish the board a happy School Board Recognition Month for all your service.
I didn't even know.
Surprise.
Until I came into presence today. That doesn't happen all the time.
Thank you.
Yeah, so on behalf of the association, we hope you enjoyed your goodies, and we just want to say that we appreciate, especially the members on, sitting on this board currently, for always being willing to collaborate with us on all types of issues and, you know, come to agreements that work in the best interest for everybody, students, staff, and the community as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. If there isn't any other public comment, we are going to move on to our board action items. If folks who are here who have given public comment want to use this as a time to recess and quickly scribble their names off to the sheet, please do. We'll play a little departing music for you. Thank you all so much for coming out tonight. I feel like we should have like a little two-minute intermission or something.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's move on to, let's see, curriculum. Michelle, could you move the curriculum and instruction items for us?
Yes. I would like to move items, number one through, sorry, I forgot where I was. One through six, yes, and I would like to table B through C, I'm sorry, B through D in the item number two, November incident report.
Okay.
So that's tabling B, C, and D.
Okay. So only A is actually the hip incident report from November. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Nope. Okay. I feel so empty in here now.
I know. I miss them.
Wait, are we supposed to be voting on things? There's no one here, or whatever. Okay, Linda, can we please have a roll call?
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes?
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, DeNicolla?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Krieger, could you please move the finance and facilities items?
Yeah, I'd like to move items number one through 15.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Nope. Seeing none. Linda, can we please have a roll call?
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes?
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, DeNicolla?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Okay. And Ann, could you please move the personnel items for us?
Yes, I'd like to move items one through 19 under Personnel, with the corrections previously noted to number 13.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on any of the items? Nope. Seeing none. Linda, can we have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes, on everything abstained from 18.
Ms. McFadden, DeNicolla?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Okay. And Ann, I'm sorry, Mark, could you move the policies? Force of habit.
Yes, of course.
Thank you for taking this over, Mark.
You're welcome. Item, I would like to move item one.
Okay. Any discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay. Linda, can we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. McFadden, DeNicolla?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Okay. We don't have any items to move for equity and excellence, so we'll move on to our board liaison reports. I just wanted to let you all know, I did do a little, Scott and I did a little outreach to Mayor Brill Middler and to our liaison on the council, Councilwoman Wolkovitz, to just kind of get a sense, like, some of these liaison positions that we have perpetually don't meet, they seem, but we keep getting assurance that they're all current committees, so even if they're not meeting, so I guess for now, we'll leave them as is, although I am going to ask Dr. Taylor, who's meeting, I think, on Thursday, right? With Gail? Right, tomorrow, oh, tomorrow, okay. Scott and Linda are meeting with Gail and the Borough's Business Administrator, and I'm going to ask Dr. Taylor to speak with Gail about, I'm not remembering the exact name of the committee right now, but they basically have a committee that does kind of the Safe Roots to School kind of work, and I would really like to have one of us, I'm volunteering as tribute, because the one liaison position I have that interacts with the town never meets. So I would actually like to be engaged with the town on some level. The only position I do is the Delegate Assembly, which I enjoy doing, but that's a different kind of interaction than doing any kind of direct interaction with the, with the town. And as we hopefully move forward with this after-school bus and trying to establish more of a connection for our kids who live up on Cedar Avenue, I think that may be an important connection. So I'm hoping that the mayor will agree that that would be a good place for a representative from the board, and I'll update you guys at the next meeting about that. So with that said, I didn't notice if there was something on the drive for, for the municipal drug and alcohol line?
No, they haven't met yet.
They haven't met yet, okay. And again, Mr. Krieger, in those positions for committees that never meet, Borough Public Information, Borough Public, that's not worded properly. I don't remember how that's supposed to be worded, but that's not right. But basically, the Public Information Committee, HPTV, doesn't ever seem to me. I'm assuming you've gotten no?
No, I've gotten nothing.
Okay.
And the cable TV advisory.
Right, yes.
I've gotten nothing from any of those three.
Exactly. Okay. So Rob, do you have any updates for us? For, Rob Magaziner, do you have any updates for us from HPEF?
So, yes, I did attend this past meeting, as did Scott. Scott gave an update on a variety of wonderful things happening in the district, which I think are valuable for the foundation to hear about. I will add, this coming Saturday, the Ed Foundation is doing one of their fundraisers for this, this half of the school year, and I believe that part of it has been sold out already, which is fantastic, and the second part, which is at, can I say Pino's? Is, I guess, music is, and drinks and stuff happening at Pino's fundraiser with a DJ, and that's from nine to 12 on Saturday night, so it should be a fun evening and for a good cause.
Great.
Yeah.
Let's see. Ann just stepped out of the room, so we will come back to her. Was there something on the drive from Rebecca?
There is. There was a meeting on December 17th, so it's on the drive.
All right, and we will check that out. Shared Services, again, that's my liaison position that never meets, and I was looking before I emailed, asked Scott to communicate with Gail about it, and it hasn't met since, I think it was like May of 2017 or something, so it's been, you know, it's been quite, it's been quite a time. Monique, do you have anything from Highland Park Parents and Students of Color?
No updates. They haven't met since our last meeting, but they will be meeting tomorrow.
Okay. So Ann, you're up next for Human Relations, and then, I don't know if you've even noticed this on here, I kind of inadvertently last time put you on commission for universal access?
That's fine.
When Judy wasn't, because Judy wasn't here, but we can also switch that around.
No, I'm good with that for now.
Okay.
All right. If we have a new board member at some point wants to do it, yep.
Okay. But for the meantime, anything on Human Relations?
No. They met on January 16th. I was not able to go. The minutes did not have anything, did not have anything directly school-related on them. It does look like the commission, I think the commission is a cosponsor of, or perhaps the sponsor of, the Martin Luther King Day festivities that were held here, so I'm sure a lot of people here went to those, and I gather they were quite successful in honoring Tyrone Harrison, the brother of our youth safety specialist, Sean Harrison. So apparently, that was, it was a nice ceremony. of our youth safety specialist, Shawn Harrison, so apparently that was, it was a nice ceremony. And the keynote speaker was our own Amiri Tuluk, former HPHS high school student, now at Columbia, maybe? Columbia. And the event is available on HPTV on YouTube, and I watched a little bit of it, and it looks fantastic. Oh, I know, there was something that occurred to me. Scott, do we liaise at all with the Borough Commission on Immigrant and Refugee Affairs? It's new, I think.
Is that dyre? Is that the same thing as dyre?
No, no, it's, this is part of HP, the Borough.
No, no, we don't.
I mean, I wonder if we might want to think about doing something there. I know that we, for example, we just have some recently added students to the district that I believe came from overseas, and, I mean, I don't know if there are services that the Borough Commission might be able to refer them to.
Yeah.
Maybe we want to start having a Board Liaison.
I'll tell you, the main relationship to this matter I've had is through Seth Capertale and all the work he's done, but it would help if I would connect with somebody who, I guess I'll reach out to Gail tomorrow.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah.
I mean, my guess is that Seth Capertale is the most informed resident of Highland Park on these matters, but the Borough Commission might have some services there to offer.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you. I'll bring it up tomorrow.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Michelle, do you have anything for us from Board of Health?
So, I have their agenda from January 10th. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to make the meeting, and I'm the first representative of our Board that has not made a meeting. Mark has been at every single meeting.
No, that's not true. That's not true.
Well, I felt terrible about not making it, so I apologize, but I will make it to the next meeting, and on their agenda, they did talk about middle, having potentially middle school representation to the Board of Health. Yeah, so this bathroom issue might be something that, you know, the Board of Health might have two cents for us on, so it would be great to hear from them, and I look forward to the next meeting.
Awesome. All right, thanks, Michelle. Mr. Roslevich, you have anything for us on the Green Team?
Not this evening.
Okay.
I'll just try, man, one second, though, and add that we did have a meeting, one of the subcommittees of the Green Team had a meeting with the group that is planning to use the grant we received to plant trees all throughout our campuses, and we're launching that planting in early summer, spring, summer, so be on the lookout. We're working with somebody from the Rutgers Cooperative Extension, a specialist in this area, and he's drew up blueprints. I did ask him to send me digital versions of the blueprints, so I can share them with you. I haven't gotten them, but be on the lookout, I'll send them to you. It's very exciting.
Yeah.
Big deal.
All right, and next is me for Delegate to New Jersey School Boards. I don't have the timeline just yet for the next Delegate Assembly, but that's not until May, so we've got a little bit of time. And Rob, anything interesting coming out of Middlesex County School Boards?
No.
No.
Nothing interesting.
Nothing to report.
Okay. Are we skipping the TV Advisory? Mark lumped that in with all of his ones that don't meet. So, for my President's Report, as Mark mentioned earlier, under his policy report, the Policy Committee reviewed a resolution that I asked them to take a look at, which is a resolution that deals with the never, seemingly never-ending saga of our state's high school graduation testing regulations.
What happened in this episode?
Yeah, no, it's, it's been kind of like almost a daily kind of what's happening now kind of thing.
Oh, blam.
So, the latest that I'm aware of, so the resolution deals specifically with the, all right, well, we'll go back a little bit, to, which I said at the last meeting, you know, advocates in the Education Law Center and Savior Schools, New Jersey, we've been telling the State Board and the Department of Education, since they proposed the regs back in, I think, 2016, these regs aren't legal. They don't comply with the state statute, and they adopted them anyway. Education Law Center, with a few other advocacy organizations, filed suit, and the court just came back and said, "Golly gee, Willikers, you're right, they don't comply with the state statute," and they overturned them. They gave the department 30 days to appeal, and the apartment, the apartment, the department, instead, from what I understand, filed a motion to reconsider, I believe that's the right term, and asked for an extenuation for the classes of 2019 and 2020. And then, the, in the interim, Senator Teresa Ruiz's, from what I understand, Senator Teresa Ruiz's staff got together with some administration staff, and they drafted legislation that would circumvent the whole darn thing and instead change the statute. So where we've been saying, "The regulations don't comply with the statute," they kind of came in at the end and went, "Okay, well then we'll change the statute." So she has a bill that's pending, interestingly enough, here's today's update, it was going to be, they were circumventing the Senate Education Committee entirely and put it into the Senate Budget Committee, and it was on the agenda for today and then was pulled at the last minute. We don't know why, but it was not voted on today. It was supposed to be voted out of committee and then go to the full Senate, I believe, on Thursday, so now that timeline is not happening, maybe something's happening next week, still don't know. But what Senator Ruiz's bill does is it takes language out of the current statute that requires the test to be a test that's given in 11th grade, and it changes the language from a test of basic skills to a test of high school proficiency and college and career readiness.
What?
So, what it essentially does is give this or any future administration just a blank slate to come up with any park-like test that we've been saying for quite some time is not appropriate for all students and is going to make passing that exit exam requirement far too difficult for a large number of students. It could enshrine that in state statute, and once it's in state statute, good luck. You know, there are certain statutes that we wanted to amend for, I mean, this statute started 40 years ago, and we haven't, we've been going in the wrong direction on exit exam testing, so, so there's a group of folks who are trying to push back against that bill and instead try to push forward with a bill to just suspend these regulations entirely for a, as of yet, undetermined number of years. There's already legislation that's sitting there, already drafted, that could be passed, so this resolution is to try to encourage that solution as opposed to changing the statute and leaving things so open-ended that we could end up with a test that's actually even worse than park. The other thing that the statute, the change to the statute does is it mandates that students take those tests, so if what's in place now were left in place, it would mandate that all students have to take ELA 10 and Algebra I. There's no opting out, there's no, you have to take that test in order to be eligible to take any of the other tests, so it's highly, highly problematic.
Can I just ask, like, what is the burden of proof? Like, what is it about this particular way of assessing students that is so precious?
Well, and in New Jersey, we're so, we're so backwards on this right now. It's absolutely startling. I mean, we're one of only two states now who are still using anything park-related as any kind of exit requirement, and we're one of only 12 states that are using any kind of exit exam at all. Most states are moving away from this, and as they've moved away from it, they've, like in some states like California, they've issued retroactive diplomas, diplomas to students who were denied diplomas based solely on the exit exam requirement. So we're really moving in the wrong direction, and all I can say from what I've seen over the last few weeks, it's all political. It has zero, zero to do with research, what's good for kids, what educators want. It's a bunch of people in back rooms using bargaining chips.
And I love how they-
It's the kind of stuff that just makes my stomach turn, and if I could have gone today to testify, I would have gone, and I just could not fit it into my life, but it's the kind of stuff that really, 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 really gets under my skin, because it's, we'll go back to it, remarkably undemocratic and is not based on what's good for children.
Or financial sense.
Right.
Like, there's a lot of people who are very angry and very conservative, you know? They don't like to pay taxes to the degree that they're paying taxes and see them wasted. And let's get angry, like, oh my God, the waste.
Well, the, the hard part right now is, you know, people's anger is so diffuse, right, in so many places, it's hard, and people have been fighting this, this particular fight for so many years now, you just, lots of people just get to the point where they're like, they just kind of throw up their hands, like, "Y'all are going to do what you want to do anyway," you know, like, so it gets very hard to motivate people to keep pushing back, but you guys know me, I don't tend to quit, so here's our resolution.
Thanks.
And the second we pass it, we'll start spreading it around, and we'll try to get other boards to support it as well. Senator Deignan already supports it, Senator Deignan is actually already a sponsor, and actually, I wanted to, when we get to the part where we talk about who we send it to, I want to add in a couple more strategic folks that we want to send it to, that for some reason I missed getting on here, but we do want to send it to Senator Sweeney as the Senate President, and also to Assemblyman Craig Coughlin, who's the, who is the, his counterpart in the Assembly. Jonathan has been nice enough to put me in touch with some folks in Assemblyman Coughlin's office, who I'm trying to get to understand these issues, and I want to make sure that they get a copy of the resolution as well, so. So with that, I will just read it in to the record, and then we can take a vote on it, and in between, anybody can ask any other questions that they might have. So it's Resolution Urging the Passage of A 672 S 558, Suspending the Testing Requirements for Graduation. Whereas on December 31st, 2018, the New Jersey Appellate Division, the Court, found the New Jersey Department of Education's NJDOE's High School Graduation Testing Rules in Violation of State Law, and whereas the Court Decision Strips the Entire Regulatory Scheme Containing NJAC 6A 8-5.1 Graduation Requirements of Any Meaningful Enforcement, and whereas the Court Decision Confirmed that the Rules First Imposed in 2016 improperly mandate a different set of tests and alternatives than the statute requires, and whereas more than 200,000 New Jersey juniors and seniors in the classes of 2019 and 2020 are directly and urgently affected by the uncertainty and confusion around the graduation testing requirements, and whereas the graduation rules have changed every year, required schools and students to navigate multiple new layers of standardized testing, hopelessly confused parents and families, and disrupted the graduation plans of tens of thousands of students, and whereas exit testing for high school diplomas is not required by any federal mandates, including the Every Student Succeeds Act, and whereas research shows conclusively that exit testing for diplomas lowers graduation rates, increases dropout rates, and feeds the school-to-prison pipeline, and whereas the great majority of states have rejected the practice of using exit tests to determine eligibility for high school graduation, and whereas New Jersey is now one of only two states using renamed, rebranded park tests as its primary graduation exam, and whereas there is an urgent need to provide clarity to districts and certainty to students and their families about what they must do to graduate, and whereas there is currently no set of tests and alternatives available that can fairly and legally implement the existing graduation statute for students in the class of 2019 and 2020, and whereas legislation is currently pending in the New Jersey Legislature, which clearly and quickly resolves the situation by suspending the graduation testing requirements for the classes of 2019 and 2020, while allowing state testing to continue for federal and state accountability purposes, including ESSA, and keeping all other state and local requirements for graduation in place, now therefore be it resolved that the Highland Park Board of Education hereby urges the members of the, members and the leadership of the New Jersey Assembly and Senate to move quickly to pass A 672 S 558, Suspending the Testing Requirement for a State-Endorsed Diploma for the classes of 19, 2019 and 2020, and for future classes, as it deems appropriate, during the transition to a new state assessment system, and two, urges the Governor to support and sign A 672 S 558 as quickly as possible, and urges the NJDOE to complete its Phase Two review of the state assessment system, which is now underway, with the goal of recommending new, clear, consistent, and educationally sound graduation policies, and be it further resolved that this resolution, oh, there's a typo there, that this, not his resolution, that this resolution be certified and submitted to our state representatives, the New Jersey School Boards Association, the Board Secretaries of each school district in the county, the County Office of Education, and the Office of the Commissioner of Education, and I want to add in there Senator Sweeney and Assemblyman Coughlin. So that's it.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
John.
So, can I get a, I would like to move that we adopt this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
No, it's fabulous.
No, okay, seeing none. Linda, could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorasty?
Yes, please.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden, DeNicolle?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
And very quickly, thank you first, everyone, and very quickly, before we move on to old business, I just want to mention that the period of time has lapsed for community members to put in their materials, for the appointed, for the vacant seat that we need to appoint someone to fill. We did have two community members put in their materials. We will bring both of those community members back, and I guess Linda will notify them tomorrow that they'll be coming back at our next meeting, which is on February 11th. And at that meeting, we will be meeting in closed session beforehand to finalize the questions that we'll ask of those candidates, then bringing those candidates into public session. We will, we will ask those two candidates, those, that same series of questions with, we'll draw a name out of a box or something to see who will go first and who will get escorted out of the room for a period of time, so that the second person doesn't get the benefit of hearing the questions that the first person has asked. Then the Board will recess, recess into closed for a short period of time to discuss the candidate's qualifications, and then we'll come back into open session, and then it's handled very similarly to how we do the votes for President and Vice President when we do our reorganization meeting. Linda will call for any nominations, and any nominations that are, that are put forward will have a vote, so if there's a nomination, one nomination for each person, the full Board will vote in public on each of those nominations. If there's only one nomination, the Board will just vote on that one nomination. Obviously, a nomination and a second is required. We should make that clear. So that is the process that we will go through, and then that person will be seated that night and join us at the board table, which we are very much looking forward to. So that is the process that we'll go through at our next board meeting, and I hope everybody can be here to participate. So with that, we'll move on to old business. Does anybody have any, any old business that they would like to discuss? No? Anybody have any new business that they would like to discuss?
One piece of new business for anyone who can't see it right now, I think we set the board table up on the wrong side of the room, because the Highland Park Middle School did an excellent job for the Windows of Understanding, putting together a mural on the window that is, that we can see from where we're at.
Maybe we can put a huge mirror back here, so that it's reflected there.
If you want to see something pretty amazing right now, if you come into the parking lot and look at this window, at just about any time of day, at night, when this room is lit up, it is an amazing piece of art for the Windows of Understanding, and it's an excellent job by the Highland Park Middle School Art Department.
Right, and thank you for mentioning that, Rob. I actually meant to ask you, Scott, do we know how long it's going to be up?
For as long as Windows of Understanding is in motion, and I think it's, I don't know, let me look it up, it's a couple of weeks.
If it, does it last through our next meeting by chance?
No, I don't think so. I'll pull it up. But Windows of Understanding is a-
Does it have to come down after Windows of Understanding?
Not necessarily, I love it. It's not, for those who are watching, it's actually a series of transparencies. You know, the old, we had 50-something boxes of transparencies we'd never used, and so Hawthorne took it, and after she scaled a drawing, put it out there on all these separate sheets, so we can leave it up there.
I mean, I was thinking, I would love to have Ms. Hawthorne and some of the students who worked on it come out to a board meeting and-
Talk.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Yeah, it would be really nice, and I would love to get a photo with us and the students and the-
And actually, correction, Windows of Understanding takes place through February 28th.
Excellent.
So perhaps on the-
So if you, could you-
25th?
Yeah, could you reach out to her?
Yeah.
And see if-
Are we here on the 25th? No, we're at the high school, but we could do it on February 11th.
The high school art department was also involved. They did your window at your store, right?
I believe- I believe so.
Yeah.
And I've been attending a series of sessions, the first one was at Ruthie's on Sunday, table talks, that brings community and artists together, the mayor was there as well. If you're interested, the next one is at the Blue Horse this Sunday at noon, from noon to 2, you could drop in. I went for the last half hour, and it was fantastic, nice conversation, got to meet some new people.
Nice. Is the district sending out anything via paperless about this whole?
Ah, we did about, I posted something on Facebook, but not about the window, but not about Windows of Understanding, I could.
Yeah, it'd be nice to send that out via email to everybody.
Okay.
It's such a nice program that's been put together this year.
Will do.
Awesome, all right. So for nobody else, thank you, Rob, for bringing that up, I meant to bring that up. Anybody have anything else for new business? No, we have no more public, John's good, I'm assuming, yeah, he's good. All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Subdue.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Well, that's a lot of seconds, geez. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, good night, everybody.